Good evening, welcome to our regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for invitation tonight by Reverend Steve Mills of Faith Missionary Baptist Church in Hamlet. Good evening, it's good to be here tonight, much proud. I would have to Father, we come tonight and thank you for this beautiful day that you're here with us. And Lord has we come, we just ask that you be with these council members, Lord, and their decisions that make and affect the people in the city of Hamlet, Lord. Lord, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We ask that you would be with all these that represent us in the city, Lord, and may we always put you first in our lives and decisions that we make, Father. And Father, we do thank you for our police force, our firemen, our medics, and those who keeps our streets clean. Lord, let just be with those. Lord, we just love you so much, we thank you for every blessing of life. Forgive us when we fail you, which in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Council, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Ms. Masagie. Are there any further additions, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. You also have before you at this time, the minutes from the July of the 12th, 2016, open and close sessions. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve, both sets?
Yes, sir.
Need a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further additions, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. At this time, we come to that portion of our meeting where if you have anything that you need to bring to the attention of the city council that is not on the agenda for tonight, we would ask you at this time to please come forward and make your presentation. Thank you, if not, we'll move along. At this time, we also have an announcement on the Center of Excellence. Nicky, let's come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm delighted to present to you a very exciting milestone for the city of Hamlet. On June the 22nd, a team from the Division of Aging and Adult Services recognized the Hamlet Senior Center as a Center of Excellence. And this certificate provides and proves that we are a viable, fundable, and qualified provider of services in our community. Scope is a voluntary process used to achieve this wonderful status. Scope stands for Senior Center Operation Procedure Evaluation and is an initiative designed to enhance operations and programming of senior centers. Here's how the program works. Applications for Scope have to be submitted a year in advance. And then, there's a Scope evaluation tool, which is 51 pages long. So once that's filled out, completed, and it has to be sent to the area on agents two months before the actual site visit was scheduled. Once that passes on that level and the area on aging signs off on it, then a month in advance, the Scope tool has to be sent to the North Carolina Aging and Adult Services. Once it passes the desk review on that level, then the Scope team will proceed in attending the center and reviewing the documents. Now, the Scope tool that was submitted, that's just not evidence enough. Once the team actually comes to the site, the Scope team will check. It's kind of like an audit. So they actually check to make sure that everything that was submitted in the tool is actually on site. So they go through the files, they go through our programming, they check every little detail of the senior center to make sure it is what we say it is. Okay. So during that Scope team visit, the team evaluates their programming in five major areas. The first area is services, publicity, and marketing. The second area is programs, activities, volunteer opportunities, advocacy, and transportation. The third area is planning, evaluation, and input from older adults. The fourth area is staffing. Fifth is operational issues, which involves a lot of collaborations with other organizations. Lastly, they have a category that's considered the extra mile. And that is helping other centers and it could be special projects as well. So after careful evaluation, the Scope team determines if a center is an unqualified center, a center of merit, or a center of excellence. This is a long process, but it's very rewarding. So this afternoon, I am proud to announce the Hamlet Senior Center as a Center of Excellence. Being a Center of Excellence enhances the center's professionalism, provides accountability, assures quality, improves credibility, promotes consistent standards, and identifies excellence while providing input and suggestions enhancing programming. In addition, a certified Center of Excellence brings three shares of state funding, which approximately amounts to $15,000 a year. Recertification will be in five years on June the 30th, 2021. Thank you.
We were out of the process after Ms. Sellers left because she wasn't, nobody had been certified. And we had one that came on behind her, didn't stay very long, and then we hired Ms. Sewell. And we expected it was going to take us anywhere from two to three years to regain our Center of Excellence, and she did it in one year. So we're just extremely proud of that, thank you Nikki.
Absolutely. Nikki, I also want to add that I really appreciate you sending out the calendar of everything going on for the month, this senior centers has things going on. We appreciate that, so we got a heads up and I hope I'm going to get something here soon. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, there being no old business, we'll move on into new business. Item number seven, public hearing on rezoning, number one. This is a piece of property that's owned by Randy and Cindy Moore, 28 acre tract of land located in the city's ETJ off of Freeman Mill Road. It was rezoned from light industry to residential several years ago for the previous owner, Land Incorporated. Current owners would like to divide the parcel into two tracts and rezone the smaller tract of neighborhood business, B3. Planning board met on July the 19th of 2016 and gave a favorable recommendation for the rezoning. So at this time, we do have a public hearing open on this rezoning. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And item number eight, consideration of rezoning request number one and the council's consistency statement. Council, what are your wishes on this?
So moved to approve.
Second.
On both the...
This is going to be for both?
Yes, for the...
A second.
Any further discussion, changes, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Next item of business is item number nine, public hearing, rezoning number two on Calder. Mr. Donald L. Wood, Eddie Calder, owns a vacant lot located in the city limits on Vance Street. The owner would like to rezone the property from B1, which is central business, to B2, general business. Planning board met on July the 19th of 2016 and gave a favorable recommendation for the rezoning. A public hearing has been advertised, first class letters mailed to surrounding property. At this time, we will open the public hearing on this piece of property. It's my understanding that all the property that are around it has already been zoned at some time as B2, but this one little piece is B1. Does anyone have any comments on this? Mr. Calder, did you have any comments tonight? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. You have before you, council, consideration of rezoning request number two and the council's consistency statement.
So moved to approve.
We approve it. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Motion and a second.
Yes.
Is there any further questions, comments, changes, additions, or anything? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Something along those same lines, are we doing anything to try to bring all the properties up to the correct code that they should be? Or is that just something we do when there's a problem? Are we looking at any areas or anything now?
I'm not entirely... Testing? Okay, we're good. I'm not in... Could you restate the question? I'm not entirely sure what you're asking.
There's a lot of property around that's spot zoned. Are we going to do anything proactively to try to deal with those or just sort of case-by-case basis?
We certainly... I'm not aware that we are proactively, but we certainly can if it's legal. I would turn this over to our attorney.
Yes, I've got two thoughts on that. One, city council can always rezone property. Obviously, you wouldn't want to, you know, rezone something that's fine to spot zoning or do some other action like that. I guess my question would be, before you start undertaking comprehensive rezoning of areas of town, you probably want to look at your comprehensive plan and say, okay, is this where we want to be? Is there anything we need to update? Because then that gives you a roadmap for that kind of project. So the answer, I guess you could, but I don't know if you all are in...
Basically, what we need is to come up with a comprehensive plan. That we probably don't have.
I'm going to ask a dumb question, Mr. McQueen. Do we have a comprehensive plan?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mayor and council, we do not have a comprehensive plan. I know that our zoning map was adopted in 1994 by the city council. It was prepared by the PD Council of Governments, which no longer exists. That might be something that we could reach out to the Lumber River Cog to assist us with. But if a comprehensive plan is what it would take, then I would certainly recommend that.
Yeah, and let me just add to it, there's no legal requirement that you have a comprehensive plan. I just think that if you're going to undertake the effort of trying to update zoning, you'd want to have it reflect what it is you're trying to achieve in Hamlet. But I mean, you all could start sort of the updating process now if you wanted.
Thank you. Moving along to item number 11. Council, we have before us, Tax Collector Jennifer Turner, the 2015 Annual Statement, and this is a listing of properties that were unpaid taxes on them as of June the 30th of 2015. And we're just asking for approval on this settlement.
So moved to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this doesn't mean we're not going to continue trying to collect these taxes. We will be after these properties, collect these taxes. Also, before you, council, item number 12, you have approval of submitted tax releases for the month. You see those before you, what are your desires on that?
So moved to approve.
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
A second? Is there any further questions on it? Additions, or deletions, or changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise.
Before you go, where are we at with the property there on Monroe Avenue? The corner lot that we talked about? Did we ever contact any family?
Is that kind of a nearby apartment somewhere?
No.
No, the old house sitting there.
This is at the corner of Monroe Avenue and Highway 177. The short answer to your question is yes, and I would invite Ms. Strickland, our zoning administrator, to come up and give some additional details.
While she's coming up, I want to say, just this past week, I had some complaints from some teachers up there that there's a lot of people hanging around these vacant houses in the yard and on the porch and that sort of thing. And they would wish that the police department would give it a little more attention, especially when it's school starts.
Mr. Bowie, this would be, I want to say, 204 or 205 Monroe Avenue?
It wasn't a particular address that I know of, but I know that the area right there, there's some vacant houses. And these people are hanging around, don't have any business being there.
The one on the corner there has gotten a lot better with the police tape. Are we still shooting ones? Are we still... Is that under any kind of investigation still since we had the issue there? I know the tape is now on the ground, but...
I'm not sure if there is an open investigation at this time. I can follow up with you and check with the police chief.
I guess, Gail, like the short answer to this is, did we find anybody to...
The short answer is, I mailed out a letter about some of the issues there. The letter was not received. I sent it certified, I also sent it regular mail. The regular mail did not come back.
Are these out of town owners?
But now, yes, they're out of town. But it is on, we gave our code enforcement inspector a list of about 20 properties about mid-July. So it is on the list with that. Several in that area, we have about 20 that are on the list. So have not made contact with an owner, no.
I didn't think we had, but I thought we had determined that the owner was deceased.
We did try, we did try, but at any rate, you're working on it, I know. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Anything else? Okay. Item number 13 I have before me, we'll read to you. Proclamation from the council for a Day of Remembrance for the Imperial Foods Fire. Whereas tragic event occurred in Hamlet on Tuesday, September the 3rd of 1991, which changed the lives and the history for many individually and collectively. And whereas September the 3rd, 2016, will mark the 25th year following the Imperial Foods Fire that took the lives of 25 people, injured another 55, orphaned 49 children as a result of the unfortunate incident. And whereas during this 25th year after the tragedy, we will continue to mourn the loss and the lives affected by the fire and will forever hold them in our memory. And whereas we continue to pray for physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual healing for those who suffered from this disastrous loss, and extend encouragement in hope and faith. And whereas the city of Hamlet will hold a special memorial service to serve as a Day of Remembrance on Thursday, September the 1st, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. at the Code Auditorium. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet and the council members for the city of Hamlet, North Carolina, hereby call on every citizen of Hamlet to set aside and observe Saturday, September the 3rd, 2016, as a Day of Remembrance. In the memory of the lives that were taken and injured from the fire, as well as the EMS personnel, law enforcement personnel, and all volunteers who answered the call of tragedy on September the 3rd of 1991 at the Imperial Foods Fire. In witness hereof, I hereon too set my hand and affix a seal of the city of Hamlet this ninth day of August, 2016. Bill Bayless, Mayor. Council, anyone have comment on this? Also, I have before me tonight a mayoral proclamation. This is Chiara Malformation Awareness Month, September 2016. Whereas Chiara malformation is a serious and chronic neurological disorder in where the cerebellum descends out of the skull, thereby compressing the brain stem and/or the spinal cord. And whereas symptoms usually appear during adolescence or early adulthood, include severe head and neck pain, vertigo, muscle weakness, balance problems, blurred or double vision, difficulty swallowing, and sleep apnea. And whereas there are no known preventive measures or cures due to the lack of awareness and research of the disorder, persons and families can be under tremendous physical, mental, emotional, and economic strain. And whereas there are no known preventive measures or cures due to the lack of awareness and research of the disorder, persons and family can be under tremendous physical, mental, emotional, and economic strain. Whereas rising awareness of this traumatic disorder is essential to generating federal and private funding for the research and a cure. I now therefore, William Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, proclaim the month of September 2016 as Chiara Malformation Awareness Month in the city of Hamlet, and I urge all citizens to take part in activities and observances designed to increase awareness and understanding of Chiara malformation. Witness my hand and seal, city of Hamlet, this ninth day of August, 2016. At this time, we'll move along to item number 15, city manager's report.
I just wanted to share the reminder of the Family Fun Day that we're having later this week on Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Hamlet Public Library. Main Street will be closed directly in front of the library. We have a couple other upcoming events that I wanted to remind you all about. The Imperial Foods Fire Memorial Service, which will be Thursday, September 1st at 10:00 a.m. And I also wanted to remind you of the Labor Day Holiday, Monday, September 5th. City offices will be closed for the holiday, and we will not have to alter our garbage schedule. That's all I had to report.
Any questions for the city manager? Before we move into comments, council, I just would like to recognize Quala Allen from the Lumber River Cog. Did you have some comments for us tonight?
Good evening. No, sir, I do not. I come as a spectator for the new members. Jan Hester-Mainer, who is our executive director, has assigned each employee of the Cog jurisdictional assignments. And I've been very blessed and fortunate to have the city of Hamlet for about three years. I enjoy coming to your meetings. I'm required to come twice a year. Usually I try to come early spring and the late fall. One of those meetings, I do try to provide you with an overview of the Cog, any information. We will like to acknowledge Nikki and all the hard work the staff at the Hamlet Senior Center done to regain that certification of scope of excellence. We have, in the state, there are several, however, within our region, which is a five county, we have only a handful, actually, she may be about the second, the third, in our area. So we're very proud to work with Nikki and the staff. And I just want to take the opportunity to introduce myself to the new members. I was here when you were sworn in, but I look forward to this meeting, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
But I did make a comment to Jan that there possibly may be a call for some information about your comprehensive plan, so...
Okay, thank you.
I didn't want to get by without recognizing you. Thank you for coming, you're always welcome. At this time, we'll move along to comments, council. Mr. Lindsey?
Be out there, fun day with making snow cones for the kids. Nice to see the AMP coming down. And that's about it for me.
Mr. McQueen?
Yeah, I got a few things. I'm sort of catching back up. I missed the past two meetings, and I apologize for that. Although, one of them, I did participate briefly by phone, although that was not a good experience. I like to see us try to get the equipment before we could do that when we needed to. Couple things I wanted to bring up. The meeting that I missed was the actual budget meeting that we had, where we voted on the budget for this year. And there was a couple things in there. One thing specifically that I wanted to bring up. This was the second year that the council did not give a raise to the employees. Before this meeting, and I think it was on June the 14th was the meeting. Couple weeks before that, we had a budget meeting. We had a vote during that time to actually give a 1.5% pay raise to the city employees and up to 2.5% merit raise to the employees. And then, at the meeting, it was changed, and the 1.5% cost of living raise was done away with. I came on two and a half years ago and tried to make a real big significant impact in the low wages. We were losing a lot of employees. And this was the second year that we did not give a cost of living raise. The significance of that, yeah, we did give a 2.5% merit raise. However, there's a significant number of employees that will not get a 2.5% or a .5% or any raise until their anniversary date pops up for their review. I've talked to at least four or five people that won't get it until June of next year. So in theory, they didn't get a raise. It just depends on when you were hired or when the last action was promotion-wise. I just feel like that was a step back, and I wasn't here for that. I voted against not giving the raise. Of course, I wanted to give that raise. The next thing that I wanted to bring up, no, I want to ask Marcus. When are you doing the evaluation? Is it on the date of their hire or is it on the date of the last personnel action?
It would be on the date of the last personnel action. In other words, if a police officer started in August of 92 but was then promoted to a sergeant, we would not go by the date when he or she started, but by the date he or she was promoted up to sergeant, if that makes sense. Because when an employee is promoted to another position in another pay grade, they are then put on probation for that position. And then, once that, once six months is up and their probationary period ends, they're given a probationary raise. And a year after that appointment date, when they were promoted to that current position or entry position, that's when the evaluation takes place.
So if somebody started in August and got promoted in June, then they wouldn't be eligible for that merit raise until...
The next June, that's right.
And how long have we been doing that?
Now.
Since like, when? I mean, today?
July 1st. Because let me remind you...
Beforehand, it was the date of, it was the date they were hired, not the date of the action.
For many years, we did not do performance evaluations, but the years that we did do them, I believe that we went by the initial employment date, which would not be correct.
I would just caution that in the future, if we're going to do something like that, we need to let the employees know, because a lot of employees knew they were hired in, say, August, and were expecting that the only raise that they were getting would be that merit-type raise, but found out that they're not eligible for it until the date of that action. I get both ways, I just want them to know about it, I guess is the thing I'm saying. And, you know, it's just very important for us to try to keep employees, and that was something I wanted to bring up. The next thing I wanted to bring up, I've got several phone calls. During the budget process, there was a motion brought up to give the council and the mayor a raise. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like 20 something years that it happened. 25, 26 years. And I think the council raise went from 2,400 a year to 4,000 a year. It's not like we're making a great deal of money.
We did take what we were paid. We took what it was back at that date and put it into today's dollars.
Right.
So it's essentially the same thing.
Right, right. And not knocking 100% of that, but that did come up. We had a vote, the vote, it was there in a budget meeting. And I would just tell everybody, they need to come to budget meetings, because some very important things occur during these budget meetings. And I mean, people up here can attest, there's nobody that takes interest in coming to these meetings. During this particular meeting, there was only four council members. It was a vote, it was a two-to-two tie. Two people voted for it, two people voted against it. The tie was broke by the mayor. The mayor casted a vote not to give the raise. Then, at the next budget meeting, it came up again, and then it passed, ultimately it passed. A four-to-one vote. All council members was there. I voted against the council and the mayor getting the pay raise. And the reason that I voted against it specifically, although I do know there's a lot of work that goes into these jobs, a lot of time away from home, a lot of lost money from your full-time job and all of that, I was against it specifically for being enacted immediately. I would have been open to the idea if we would have voted on this and said, we will bring it in in 2017. And that way, it just, it didn't seem right to me. That being said, I was very disappointed that the council did vote to give themselves a raise and did not give the city employees the 1.5% raise. And of course, I'm not, you know, I'm not wanting to keep bringing stuff up. But I wasn't here. If I would have been here, I would have brought this up at that time. So I did want to bring those up. One other thing I've got, and I've, you know... One other thing I've got, the police department, there's a couple officers here, so I'll just direct this to Marcus. We've been talking to Scott in the past few meetings about some graffiti on McDonnell Avenue, on the street, profane words and things like that, near your church down there. It's still going on, it's gotten worse. I don't know that there is a solution, but something, something probably needs to be done. There's nothing more than those of being proactive and going in there and cleaning up after it happens. Because, I mean, you've got a lot of elderly folks that live in that area and I don't like looking at it and I know they don't like looking at it. It's right there at the church. Also, I was just told tonight by someone, there's a business, I think it's on Raleigh Street, and Bill can probably correct me on this one if I'm wrong, the old cake shop or something is unsecure and people's hanging around that. And we can find out, A, who owns it and get them, you try, well, the city needs to step up if it's legally acceptable and ask TC if we can secure that because it doesn't need to, it doesn't need to be left open. And if it's left open, it's going to cause a problem.
Unsecured is, then the doors unlocked?
Doors open.
Unsecured is the doors open. Something needs to be done to it. That's pretty simple. The last thing I've got, I've got a major problem with some issues going on on the lower end of Hamlet Avenue down at the railroad tracks. The ballroom specifically, there's been a lot of different things going on in that area. However, it appears to me that the ballroom's being rented out for the purposes of weekend parties and things like that, and some of them getting out of hand. There's litter being distributed on the street, people urinating out in the open in the flower planters. I've got some pictures that I'll, at some point, I'll send to Marcus and he can distribute them to everybody. Just hundreds of people out walking around, holding cups in their hands, cars doing U-turns in the middle of the road. There's been some major problems down there as far as some violence that's occurred down there. And I'm going to pose this question as much to the attorney as I am to Marcus. What can we do legally about making sure when people rent out these buildings and these businesses? What can we do to assure that the owners not circumventing any ordinances to allow, say, the backdoor club or a bar from opening temporarily for a, you know, a brief period of time? It's not fair that our officers have to go down there and put up with that. And it's just not fair that that's going on.
Let me say while you're on that, that I got some complaints that it was being, the building was being overloaded. And the fire department hadn't been going down there and knocking checks even when they got complaints.
See, that's another issue. But it could be so-
We need to make sure they're not overloading the building.
Yeah, I mean, I know you can't really police if somebody's going to have a party and do this, but if somebody's renting that building and going in there and selling alcohol, they're violating the law. Just like the mayor said, the one thing that we do have as a city, as an entity, is to control the amount of people in the building. And that may be the way we need to handle that. Say, I've got those pictures that were given to me by someone and I'll make sure that I get them to Marcus and he'll see them. But I mean, I worked at the police department here for 14 years and I've seen clubs open and as every bit of a club, you've got two officers in here now, I don't know if they work night shifts or not, but there's a mess going on down there and somebody's going to get hurt and we need to be proactive and stop them.
I know that our police department has been working to be more proactive in policing that area, visiting businesses and checking in. I have heard a lot of those similar complaints. If we can enforce code a little bit more stricter, we will. I know that if our, how, if our fire marshal was called, he would have responded in the appropriate manner.
And I don't know that he was or he was not called, but I mean, if we get something that we can do to, and that's going to be you telling us what we can and can't do. I mean, make sure they're enforcing open containers, littering, bubba, urination, all the little minor infractions and misdemeanors that we're being forced.
Has anybody contacted the owner and discussed the issue going on?
No, but I will before the end of this week.
Yeah, that's a good start.
How about, how about let's do it before the end of tomorrow? Because this is something that needs to be addressed really quick. This is something that's going on every week, every weekend. And if we wait, then we're giving it another weekend for a warning of what could happen.
TC, do you have any other thoughts?
I appreciate it, because we really need to handle that. And I just want to thank Nikki for the hard work that she's done down there. I mean, you get up here and you read, you know, a nice letter in just a few minutes, but people don't see the hard work that went into that and the position that that place was in when you got there. And that's just a testament to your hard work and your dedication. So I'd like to thank you for that, too. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Martin?
A couple of comments. I want to agree with Councilman McQueen. I too oppose the removal of the one and a half percent pay increase for the city employees. That's why I voted against the budget. And I agree with everything Jesse said about, you know, why we should have left it in there for the employees. The other comment I have is about the pay raise for the city council and mayor. For the record, I could care less whether I get a pay increase or not. In fact, if you want to, you can, I'll forfeit the increase. I don't care. I didn't take this job for the money or what it pays. I don't even care what it is. I never even asked before I ever ran for this job if it even paid. I didn't even know and I still don't care. But anyway, I voted for the raise for two reasons. There are a couple of members on the city council that have jobs that they have to take their personal time from their job in order to take care of city business. And I sort of felt like that they shouldn't have to use their personal time to come to take care of city business. I don't have no clock time or anything. I come and go as I please because I'm retired. But there are some on the board that still work and still have to meet clients and still have to, you know, do their jobs in one thing and another. So that's why I voted for the increase. And the other thing was, nothing's been done to increase salaries for the city council for over 25 years or so. And I figured, well, it's about time that they do a little something, which I could care less, and I'll repeat again, you can take my raise or whatever it is and put it in the general fund. I could care less. So, but I did vote for it, so that's, that's, that's why I did. That's all, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, pass me.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I will touch on it. The raise was done. I've not had any complaints from anybody because it had been over 20 years. The job is time consuming. It's a lot more than what you just see here. We also wanted it to be that someone could participate and run for city council if they have a job that they have to take days off from, if they're a school teacher or whatever, so that you're getting reimbursement from your time away. It was, it was nothing diabolical. We took what the pay was 20 years ago, put it into today's dollars so that it's essentially the same thing that it was then. It's just accounted for inflation over 20 years of being neglected. And if someone has a problem, run for city council. That's it.
Lady?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to add, respectfully, or I have respect for every comment made, the job up here, everyone has their own opinion. And that is actually what I appreciate about this board, is beforehand, when I first came on council, there was a lot of backdoor decisions. And I like it when we can stand in front of everybody in this room and that camera and we can all talk and you share your own feelings. It's not backdoor what you see here, this is not a reality show. What's here is real. Nothing's talked about before this meeting. Everybody's saying their opinions. What I will add is, is the one and a half percent was not done away with, it's frozen. And we decided to freeze that because there were a lot of things going on, such as air conditioners broke at the depot where we had people down there that's renting from us that went over a month without AC. So imagine that if you're in your house without AC. We had to pause to do it, waiting on the budget to roll around and things of that nature. When you can't fix stuff like that immediately and make it happen, even if you've got to spend a little extra money to do it, then it's time to start reevaluating some of your costs. So there's no doubt in my mind that we will give the one and a half percent increase, the bonus. That is going to happen. I mean, we always pull this through, but you've got to be smart with money. We shouldn't have to raise taxes to give the bonus. They're going to get a two and a half percent merit increase. We take care of our employees. They're fully insured. I don't know how many of you out here in the audience and on TV at home pay your own insurance, but it's certainly great to have insurances paid, not only while you're employed, but even after you retire. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good thing to have. And I didn't mention it last meeting to Mr. Lamont, but Mr. Lamont's retired and he's getting free healthcare. That's pretty good to have. I'm not going to have it. So, and I thought about even asking him, give up your healthcare costs and let's give the one and a half percent bonus. But I prefer, if we can do it for the employees, let's do that. To me, health insurance means a lot because it's costly, it's expensive, and it's going up every single year. So with that being said, I mean, you know, I take a lot of concern and stuff in what we do for our employees. And we've spent a lot of money over the past several years buying equipment, things to that nature, that it makes their job better. I mean, you know, these officers in here, they can attest to it. You'd rather ride around in a 2016 model Challenger than you would those four-wheel drive that you can't even see out of the back window where you're backing up at. I mean, you know, those things are, they're good to have. You know, we talk about knocking down a one and a half percent raise. I had officers come to me wanting new uniforms so they can actually move when they do their job. That was shot down. But nobody's up here talking about that. You know, that's what those officers wanted. I went to each one of them. Every one of them wanted that, but we shot it down because we didn't have the money. So everybody has their things that they want. And we have reasons behind what we do up here in this, on this board. We may not all agree with it, but at the end of the day, we're going to keep this city functioning, we're going to keep money in the bank, and we're going to continue to make stuff happen without it costing the citizens a lot of money. So basically in closing, do not worry about that bonus because I'm telling you, we will make it up. We didn't just snatch it from you. You will get something. It may not have been in July, but you will get it. We always take care of you and we will continue to take care of you. So just know we didn't do it just to do it. Small reason behind it, we'll make it up. Said that before, and Billy, when I told you some things we're going to get for your department, hang in there, you're going to get it. You got it. So in due time, it'll come. We'll take care of you the way we should. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Billy.
I think the first question I got is, are you telling me that we've got police officers over there that uniforms don't fit and they can't get them uniforms?
Well-
No, can I just add, I was going to add to it, but what he's talking about, they wanted to go to a different style of uniform?
Oh.
And-
Similar to Rockingham.
Yeah, the council, I know it's my part of it and I know-
I didn't know any of that.
I can remember, we talked about it very briefly. Eddie agreed that we wanted to see our police officers in that police uniform, not in some other kind of uniforms. It wasn't a money thing for me on that one. It was just the look. I mean, I went to a parade in a town, in a county that connects with us and the police were out there in Nike tennis shoes. They were out there in shorts and t-shirts and ball hats. So I mean, I want to see the police in this town in the traditional police uniform.
I want to add, that's not what they were looking at getting, but it was something where they can actually maneuver and raise their arms up. But the whole point of it is, is just to say that we can't do everything that everybody wants. There's, you've got to look at different angles.
Well, we're working on it. I guess the mayor's comments tonight is, you know, I was on the board for eight years now, been on as a mayor for the last little over two years now, two and a half years. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I enjoy what I do. I'm retired, I can come in and if I need to in city hall, but I'm not in a position where I needed any extra money, so I was kind of against it in a way. But I do understand the position of these others on the board as to what they're saying. But like I say, I thoroughly enjoy what I'm doing and I just appreciate the fact that you put me here to do it. We want to thank city, all the city employees. City employees have been doing a fantastic job. I get nothing but good comments on them. We've had a lot of problems because of the rain, the drains are filled up. Billy there's the supervisor, I saw him out at seven o'clock in the morning with a pickup truck, pitch for cleaning out drains because his other guys were busy. So there's not a whole lot we can say, you know, bad about that. Police department's doing a great job. I get a lot of compliments seeing them out in the neighborhoods, especially at night. People like to see them out. So we do appreciate that. And other than that, I just appreciate what everybody does. I appreciate everybody that bothers to take the time to come to these meetings. And as Jesse said, I wish more people would come. We have to put them out in the hallway, I don't care. But we do have good meetings, we've got a good council, they're doing an excellent job of what we've got, and I just appreciate it. At this time, we'll move on to item eighteen. We're going to need the motion to go into closed session tonight for General Statute 143, 31811, A3, A5, A6, and A7, for attorney-client privilege, discussion of acquisition of rail property, personnel matters, and to plan, conduct, or hear reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal conduct. I have a motion.
Some of it approved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Okay, I need a motion returned, open session.
So moved.
Got a motion. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, we didn't make any votes or any decisions while in the closed session meeting. We took care of the business. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
A motion.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.